So your current status.
Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you. I'll just read next week.
Okay, good. We're good? Hi, welcome everybody. Thank you for having us here at Jefferson School. It's lovely to be here. So today is the Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting. The Board met tonight, Monday, at 6:00 PM. An executive session here in Jefferson Elementary School in the Music Room, located at 85 Prospect Street in West Caldwell, New Jersey. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous and old business matters. This meeting has been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. The public conference meeting is happening now at approximately 7:05 PM, because I was chatting, so sorry, my apologies, here at the Jefferson Elementary School Multipurpose Purpose Room. The Board of Education meeting will be streamed live. However, all community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person only. The Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference Meeting is also in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to The Progress in Caldwell, New Jersey, The Star Ledger in Newark, New Jersey, and Tap into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office, located at the Harrison School, Gray Street, West Caldwell, and have been delivered to the Clerks of the Borough of Caldwell and West Caldwell for posting. Brian, will you take the role, please?
Yes. Student Rep. Madeline Alberta.
Here.
Ms. Steve Martini.
Here.
Ms. Lindal, he, Jefferson.
Here.
Ms. Ma.
Here.
Mr. Deambola.
Here.
Ms. Rosso.
Here.
Do we have five voting members present? Do you have a form?
Great. Okay, normally, we would ask Ms. Alberta to run, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but we have two students that are going to come up today. So can I have the two Jefferson students come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And can you say your names really loud, so we know them?
My name's Maxine Riker.
Maxine and?
Katie Bohan.
And Katie, okay. Are we ready? Here we go, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, are there any communications for the Board this evening?
Nothing for tonight, thank you.
Okay, so then we're going to pass it along to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
If Mr. Ayers could come up to the front and let me introduce the principal of Jefferson, so he could tell us what's so great about Jefferson School.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. So we're just going to give you, I have six of my friends here who were selected by their teachers to be representatives of Jefferson School, and I think they did a very nice job. Not only they're great students and had to, you know, really represent Jefferson well, but they're a good cross-section of different things that happen at Jefferson School. And we decided to take a different tact. We talk a lot about math and ELA, but we don't talk a lot about some of the other things that make up, you know, our students' day. So they each chose something that maybe you don't know goes on at Jefferson School that's very important to them. So they're going to talk a little bit about that. I did put together a little slideshow for everybody, so if you wanted to, position yourself there. So family engagement is something that we've really been focusing on as a district, not only Jefferson School. And what we have is families as learning partners. So at least four times a year, this is a fourth grade, I mean a first grade, some pictures, parents are invited to come in to do either ELA or math, math games with their students. It's been a very popular program. The parents like it for, they get a little snapshot of what's going on in school. The added bonus is it also kind of squashes that, you know, conversation at the dinner table, what'd you do in school today? Nothing. Well, you actually see really, there is something going on, actually, in school. And, you know, and what's great about this, the spacing of it, it allows parents, and everyone is busy, and, you know, they would, unfortunately, aren't able to come to every event, but they're spaced out and planned enough so that hopefully, parents could come to at least one of these events. Community Equity Inclusion is something that we also focus on as one of our district goals. This is an example of our third graders coming together, both classes coming together, to take a look at their published writing pieces. And, you know, at first, it's a difficult skill to provide somebody with a critique, right? So the teachers go through the process of actually, how do you, give someone some meaningful feedback while also giving them some praise about some of the things that they saw as well. It really is a great program for these, these students that go through, and they do appreciate the feedback from their peers. Each month, we have Spotlight Texts that our media specialists will highlight and the teachers will read as Read Alouds. This is an example of this month of Black History and Lunar New Year. These are some of the books that are available for our teachers for Read Alouds. Learning and Growth Mindset, obviously, that's something that we want all our students to adopt and, you know, work towards. Kindergarten, the reality is, today's kids are on some type of device, you know, doing a lot of things that, you know, involve entertainment. But in school, we actually use devices for the learning process. Whether it's using dream, programs like Dreambox, web-based programs like Dreambox or Lexia, the students are actually using technology the further they're learning. This is an example of also how we try to make global connections to the outside world. This is a second-grade Science of Social Studies lesson. You know, you, if you listen to the news, you'll hear, like, there's a lot of emphasis on pollinators and how just various environmental impacts, there's really some stressors on these, these pollinators. But what kids don't really realize is that how important they are into everyday life, especially food production. So this is an example of how they learn what pollinators do and how we can help them. Also, with our global economy, everyone has products that are made all around the world. It's kind of hard for a young child to understand that concept. So this is an example where they had to bring in a product, look at where it was made, and actually put a dot on the map, so they made the connection of when something says it's made in China, Europe, wherever, what that actually means and how far away that is from, you know, West Caldwell. Some of our hardest-working students, our ESL students or ELL students, really are learning leaps and bounds. And just think about how complicated the English language is. For some of these learners, it truly is their first forlay into learning English. So Ms. Nowbone really works hard with our ELL students, and it's great to see the progress that they make through the years. STEAM is also something that we incorporate in various different programs. One of our students, Max, will be talking about the GAP program. Some of you may have been there at Lincoln School when they did the Library Restaurant Design Showcase, which was really a great way for all the kids to work together as a team and come up with a plan about a restaurant they would like to create. Again, here's another example of how computational thinking in the Media Center, using technology. Ms. Burkmann really does a great job with the students, like, as young as kindergarten, with pattern recognition, abstraction, decomposition, algorithmic thinking. So this is another way for using technology. Definitely way over my head, these kids have to help me with my phone, let alone, you know, learn what they're doing in the Media Center. Coding is also big, and this is an example of our fifth graders who are learning various, and fourth graders are learning various aspects of coding through the programs that they use in media. Our SMART program is relative, we had it and then we reintroduced it recently. And it's another way for our students to be, participate in extra learning. This happens after school. Another, here's an example of, and Kellen's going to talk a little bit about that as well. This is an example of how they had to program robotics. Let me see if I can get the video to work, my little clicker here. So a very simple demonstration, but all of that movement had to be programmed in, so it didn't go off the other side of the track. So it was something that students had to learn and program, the motor inside the Lego set. That's, that is basically the first step. The second step is doing art bots and other, the SpiroBots, BoltBots, sorry, that they do later on, which is more complex, more coding as well. And it really kind of just springboards the students' abilities in using technology to form robotics and other forms of AI, really. So that really is like, you know, a snapshot of some of the things that go on in Jefferson School that, you know, that don't necessarily get some of the spotlight. I'm going to bring my friends up here. All right, so we have Maxine Riker, Kellen Cavanaugh, Alex Hunkley. They're getting an order. They decided on the order they're going to speak. Max will be in here at Lepus, and they said they're going to talk to you about what they like about Jefferson School and some of the programs they participate in. Maxine?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Today, I would like to talk about band and all about it. My name is Maxine. I'm in fifth grade, and I play trombone. In each grade, from second grade to fifth grade, different instruments are available. Second graders can play violin, third graders can play all string instruments, and fourth and fifth graders can play any instruments available. But I'm here to talk about band. If you are an advanced player, meaning you have been playing the same instrument for two or more years, every Wednesday, there are morning practices at 8:00 AM. For concerts, there is usually a winter concert and a spring concert. Usually, one to three songs are played. And for this year's winter concert, we also performed in Wilson School. It was a blast. In band, instruments are flute, clarinet, drums, trumpet and trombone. We take a few months to learn a song, and at its designated time, we perform it, usually to parents. I've been playing trombone for two years, and I would like to thank Jefferson School and my music teacher, Mr. Chu, for giving me an amazing time at playing trombone and an awesome time with all my friends in band. I really enjoy playing an instrument. It makes my school year way more eventful and a better experience, even though waking up 45 minutes early every Wednesday morning for band practice isn't fun. At least I know I'm waking up to do the things I love, and it's so worth it.
Hi, I'm Kellen, another fifth grader here at Jefferson. I'll be talking about my involvement in orchestra in the ELP STEM program. Orchestra meets before school once a week, and the program has students that have been playing their instrument for two or more years. The orchestra has string instruments such as violin, viola, cello, bass, and I play the double bass. It is the massive instrument that is in the back. We practice for months with our instructor, Mr. McCoy, for the winter and spring concerts. We usually perform two or three songs at our concerts. I really love our teachers, and it's so much fun learning to play cool instruments and make friends who also enjoy music. ELP is another program that I participate in at Jefferson. It happens after school on most Tuesdays and Fridays, depending on your grade. We work on doing STEM activities such as coding Lego Spike Essential Kits and SpiroBots, which are sphere-shaped robots that can move, make noise, change color, and react to things. I really enjoy these types of activities, and having a program like this has allowed me to be able to do more hands-on STEM activities than we typically could do in our classroom. This has probably been the most, my most favorite activity that I've had, that I've done at Jefferson since kindergarten.
Hello, my name is Alex Hunkley. I am a fifth grader here at Jefferson Elementary, and I am here to talk about the Reading with a Buddy program. In my opinion, there are many benefits to this program. One of these is helping my younger peers with reading and vocabulary. I think this is important, because they are just getting into the flow of school, and reading is essential as they get older. In addition, meeting younger students that look up to me and my fellow fifth graders is no better honor. Finally, helping the younger students grow as people, and seeing them improve feels amazing. I love knowing that I was a part of it. I would like to add that my time here at Jefferson was great. I made memories that were amazing. I just want to say thank you to my teachers and my principal, who helped me in many ways. I feel very prepared and excited to enter middle school. Thank you for this amazing opportunity.
My name is Max. First, let me start with GAP. GAP is a fun extra that I'm part of. I've learned many things from it. I've learned how to work better with a group, also how to speak in public, and lastly, how to do things on my computer. In GAP, we get to think outside the box. Instead of math puzzles or equations, we do logic puzzles. I love all the activities we do in GAP. Now, I'm going to talk about the fifth-grade kickball game. I can tell it's a fun activity just from watching it in the past. I like the fact that we get to walk to Wilson. I love playing kickball. I always enjoy myself. It's a fun way to hype up the whole school.
Hello, my name is Gerald Lepus, and I am a fifth grader at Jefferson School. One of my favorite programs that I am a part of this year is Safety Patrol. This program helps students in kindergarten through fourth grade, kindergarten through fourth grade, getting to and from class every day. To be selected for a class, you need to write a paragraph explaining why you should be chosen. I requested to be a Safety Patrol for Miss Poses class, because my younger cousin is in her class, and that makes it special. I think Safety Patrol is important, because it gives fifth graders a chance to help younger students and to set good examples.
Hi, my name is Katie Bohan, and I'm going to be adding on to what Gerald said and teaching you about the benefits behind the Safety Patrol program. One benefit is leadership skills. Fifth graders have the ability to lead, influence, and guide younger students throughout the school. You also need to be dependable and trustworthy. As a Safety Patrol, fifth graders need to be able to keep younger students safe while also leading them to their classroom or after. Overall, there's a lot more to Jefferson than what it seems like. This is including band, orchestra, ELP, Reading with a Buddy program, GAP, kickball, and Safety Patrol. Thank you for listening, and have a good night.
When we were preparing for this, I told them I would tell the story how the kickball game actually got started. So, you know, I've been here long enough that some of you may not even realize how the game got started. I was probably a second-year principal, and I don't know, I was feeling cocky, and at the time, Dr. Girardi was the superintendent. For those of you that know Dr. Girardi, he was like a pretty serious guy, but he really loved March Madness and the Yankees, right? So I figured I can kind of get in on a side of the sports thing. I was at his office for a meeting of some sort, and I said, "Dr. Girardi, I want to pitch an idea to you." Now, this, mind you, this is 15 years ago. We didn't have air conditioning, so like, June was brutal. It was brutal. And I said, "Dr. Girardi, you know, we don't really do anything in June." And I could just tell by the look on his face, that was a wrong approach, right? And I said, "Well, I have this great idea. How about we do like a March Madness-type, like, kickball tournament?" And I don't even think I finished the sentence, he's like, "No." So I'm like, so I just kind of, "Okay," and I get myself, and something came out, you know, over me. As I'm walking there, I go, "Jefferson versus Wilson?" And he goes, "Okay." So that's how it got started, and I'm glad to hear the other schools actually have started it as well. It's a real fun event, as Max said, in the spring. And it's funny when you see that the younger kids, they're playing, they go, "I'm practicing for the fifth-grade game," and they're in kindergarten or first grade. So it has taken on a pretty cool life of its own. I think Ms. Alberta was part of it when she was here as well, right? All right, well, thank you so much, my friends who came here tonight. Thank you so much for, you did a wonderful job. Anybody have any questions or need clarification, what did we discuss tonight?
Thanks so much, Mr. Ayers, for your presentation, and thanks, boys and girls, for yours. We're going to take a two-minute break, so if you guys could come up, we'll take some pictures, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, just before we do that, I just, Maddie made a comment to me. I think it was probably the best comment of the evening. Please say it out loud, yeah?
She said, "I feel so old."
She looks at me, she goes, "I feel so old." Oh my goodness, this is hysterical. Maddie's a senior, and she's the president of Student Council. For those of you that don't know, and she's our student representative.
Yes, but I went to Jefferson. I'm a Jefferson alumni.
Yes.
Jefferson alumni, yeah! Does anyone on the Board have any comments or questions they want to make?
I do, just have a quick comment. My daughter's in sixth grade right now, and she went through Washington. And I have a 20-month-old who will be coming to Jefferson, so I'm not familiar with the school. And this really was very enlightening and made me want to be a part of the family here at Jefferson. So, thank you.
No, I am a Jefferson parent. I know Mr. Deambola was, and Jefferson really is a very special place. My son still talks about that Reading Buddy program, so thank you for mentioning that, Alex. That was really a special time for him. So you all did wonderful, you all are great leaders, and we love Jefferson, so.
Thank you.
And then one more thing I just want to say to all my little friends in the back row. I have to tell you, I don't know what you're all drinking, the water in Jefferson School. Like, these are future leaders of America, folks. I mean, to be this well-spoken at your age and to stand up on camera and a group of people staring at you, you guys are rock stars. Like, absolutely rock stars. And Mr. Ayers, just to you and your leadership and your staff here at Jefferson School, I think, like, one of the things I personally love the most about tonight is we pride ourselves, right, as a district, to say we're not just about data and numbers, we're about educating the whole child. And what I loved tonight was that you gave us a glimpse of what happens in here outside. We have enough with PowerPoints coming up, this percentage, that, and we need to know those things are important. But I loved tonight, the pictures, the smiles, the Legos, the robotics, right? And what I loved was that you all spoke about the things that make you happy, which is the things that we really want to promote, the band, right? GAP, Safety Patrol, like, all those things that make you want to wake up every day, right? Maxine and go to school, even if it's 45 minutes early, like you said, right? But it makes you happy, and your children and our children should be happy. That's our goal here as a district, to raise happy, well-rounded, amazing, smart, wonderful future leaders of America. And that's what we're doing here. So, Mr. Ayers, thank you to you and your staff, and thank you to parents for doing your part, as well as home and showing up here tonight. So one more round of applause, and then we'll get started. Maxine, we have a little, on behalf of the Board, because you did the pledge, we have a little certificate and a flag for you, which I forgot, but Dr. Conglin, Maddie, and Dr. Mink, so we'll give this to you. Sorry, everybody, can I just have everyone's attention just one moment? Our custodian Richie has been here tonight, like setting everything up and being so kind and super wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
Are you all still here?
Still here.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Just so you know.
Okay, all right, so we're going to continue on. Dr. Conklin, you have anything else for the superintendent's report, or are we going to...
Uh, I do not.
Okay. All right, so just for all of you that don't know, this is not a voting meeting tonight, it's just reviewing the agenda, so we're going to go through the agenda quickly. But before we do that, I wish everyone had stayed before I did this because we're going to acknowledge some important people, but hopefully people are watching at home. So the first people the board wants to acknowledge is the James Caldwell High School FBLA Club, which is Future Business Leaders of America. A team of four FBLA members recently competed in and won the Essex County Consumer Bowl, sponsored by the New Jersey Department of Consumer Affairs. The group will now move on to compete in regionals in April. Yay, FBLA! We are in the process of completing our celebration of FBLA Week. During this week, the students in the entire school competed in trivia challenges as well as raised money for Prelude to a Cure for West Caldwell. The mayor of West Caldwell, Mayor Tempesta, honored them by proclaiming the Week, FBLA Week of West Caldwell, which was pretty cool for Mayor Joe, so thank you, Mayor Joe, yes. Now we have some sports acknowledgements, pretty awesome. We have our girls, woo-hoo, female power, the girls are stepping up. So our girl swim team, okay, ours, North Group Two Sectional State Champions. Amazing, let's go, yay! They defeated Glen Ridge this past Thursday night to win this prestigious title. Please note there are only 14 members on the girl swim team and every one of them contributed to the state championship. It's a really amazing honor for them and we are so super proud of them. So I'd like to acknowledge their head coach, Mr. Steve Trevino, their assistant coach, Ms. Elizabeth Coogan-Russell, for those of you that know and love her, and many of us do, that's Coog, so yay, Coog. Team members are, and please forgive me if they're listening, if I mar the names, I'm sorry. And Maddie, correct me if I, you know. So Lena Hari, does that sound right? Lily Phillips, Elena Condorelli, Sophia Mestes, Emma Britt, Abby Fliegler, yeah, okay, Grace Krasinski, Ella Lepus, Gerald was just here, Mia Martinez, Madison McGinley, Caroline Murray, Amelia Okama?
Okama.
Okama, okay. Tegan Quinn and Michaela Tucci. So let's give our girls a big round of applause. And now we have also our boys varsity wrestling team. So our wrestling team competed and completed an amazing team season, okay? They finished 23-2 was their record. And then after being seeded second in the Group Two Section Two Team State Tournament, they defeated Rutherford 69-0 in the first round and then Bernard 60-18 in the semifinals. They then went on to face the number-one seeded Governor Livingston team in the sectional finals at Governor Livingston. I was there, it was pretty crazy. Because last year, Governor Livingston was seeded second, came to Caldwell, we were seeded first, and they beat us on our home turf. So we flipped, went to Governor Livingston this year, and we defeated them 37-26 to win the Group Two Section Two State Championship! Okay, we're going to start out, congratulations to our awesome seniors, Levi Bun, Lorenzo Camano, Julian Casal, Marco Coca, Joey Di Maria, Mike De Rosa, Jake Gruzes, and Charlie Mayo. We'd also like to acknowledge our fine coaching staff, our head coach, Sean Romano, our assistant coaches, Dave Pepe, Nick Zara, Steve Martel, and LJ Castellano, okay? The team now, we had a bunch of our wrestlers, I think pretty much almost every week class, competed this past weekend in districts and many of them moved on to regions, which will happen this weekend, Friday and Saturday at West Orange High School. So that's more individual, for those that don't know, like their team season is done. But a lot of our wrestlers, some of them are ranked in the state, which is pretty impressive, and they're going to be wrestling individually this weekend. They went through districts and now they're moving on to regions this weekend. So we want to wish the boys good luck and we're very, very proud of them. So one more round of applause for all of our FBLA, swimming, girl swimming, boys wrestling, it's amazing. And then we're going to accept next week the resignation of four teachers and just on behalf of the board, I just want to take a moment to just acknowledge them for their years of service. Many of us have shared these teachers as Washington School parents and Grover Cleveland Middle School parents. So the first is Joan Jobs, elementary teacher at Washington School, Ms. Deanna Larson, who was a music teacher, Ms. Lisa Zevin, teacher of special education at Washington School, and Ms. Inez Morrissey, it's Inez, Mariah. Inez Morrissey, who teaches Artic over Cleveland Middle School. Listen, whenever teachers retire from the district, I think it's bittersweet, like definitely for the children, it's such a loss and just as parents too, I feel like when they leave, it's like a little piece of our hearts, go with them. And these are really four very, very special women who really have impacted our children and it is definitely a loss. And next week, when we accept the resignations, I will do it with a great deal of regret, but we wish them well. Okay, so that's the president's report for this evening. Brian, are we going to, we're not approving anything, no minutes, nothing?
So the only thing we're going to vote on is Curriculum 7A.
Yes, right, okay. So approval of minutes will happen next week. We're going to open up right now, we can do, let's do public comments, since it's just a small group, on agenda items, anything on or off the agenda that anyone would like to get up and say. I'm just going to go through my quick spiel. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comments of meetings as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or across examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board will be resolved this evening. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designee. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's comments if they exceed the allotted time or are objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. That being said, does anyone want to talk about anything on or off the agenda with the board this evening? Okay, so then we're going to move on committees, so curriculum and technology, we are going to vote on 7A. So Tara, if you want to speak up.
Upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Thank you, may I have a motion? Thank you.
Yeah, that's okay.
May I have a motion to approve item 7A under curriculum and technology?
Great, and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Brian, will you take the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Di Martini?
Yes.
Ms. Lindalphy-Jefferson?
Yes.
Ms. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. D'Ambole?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Five-zero, motion carried?
Great, so then next week, we have personnel, we have our retirements that we spoke about, some resignations, amended leaves of absences, appointments, new staffs, we have the Continuing Edge Summer Enrichment Program, mentors and subs, some more field trips, that's under certificated and same under non-certificated. We also have some non-athletic appointments as well and extracurricular activities. Finance, we have the certification funds, secretaries report, budget transfers, bills and claims, all our normal boring budget stuff. Facilities, we have the use of facilities by the rec of Grover Cleveland Middle School and Girl Scouts, as well as some HSA Little League and the CPA for dancers only. And then policy, we do have some amended sick leave policies based on new legislation that was passed that we'll be approving. And that looks like it's about it. So anything next week, please feel free to come. Like I said, we're Monday back here at Jefferson School. So if you look at the agenda between now and then of any questions, you can always email Dr. Conklin or come up and speak to the board at the meeting. That being said, do I have a motion to end public session at 7:30, 9:00 PM and enter into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I will second it.
Great. Brian, will you take the roll?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All against nay. Any abstentions? Motion carried.
Great. Thank you so much, everybody. We'll see you next Monday and Mr. Ayers, thank you. Have a good night, everybody.